... this commission meeting, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, a nation, God, and faithful, obedient, honest, sovereign.
Thank you. First order is to approve the Order of the Agenda.
That will be approved.
Thank you. Commissioner Olson, is there a second, please?
I have.
And second by Commissioner Jurtevich. Moved in second to approve the Order of the Agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Approval of the minutes, September seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen. They have been distributed.
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I second.
Second. Thank you, Commissioner. Been moved and seconded to accept the meetings as distributed for the September seventeenth meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is the building permits. They have been distributed to the Commissioners. The additions, corrections, comments?
Make a motion to accept the building permits?
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second, please?
I can.
Second by Commissioner Jurtevich. Been moved and seconded to accept the building permits report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is the consent agenda. They have been distributed. We have items A through F.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioners. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on into the regular agenda. We have a final budget approval. Tina Fisk.
Good evening, Commissioners. The final budget hearing itself, we cannot hold until six o'clock. But I wanted to go over a couple of quick things with you, and that would actually take in item number two as well, if that's okay for me to move into item number two?
It'll be just fine.
Okay, thank you. Last meeting, we reviewed the sanitation rate, and it was put on hold so that there could be more information if Commissioners wanted to discuss. I believe that everyone has had their opportunity for questions and discussion, and as we're moving into the final budget hearing at six o'clock, I was hoping that we could have a motion to approve the rates as presented, and that would be the residential rate at seventeen dollars and fifty cents a month, with a basic service fee per unit and commercial account. Those are for apartment units and commercial accounts of six dollars, and then set the roll-off rate at a hundred and sixty dollars a pole, and also approve the rate series shown for dumpster rates for dumpster sizes between one yard and eight yards, as shown. Do you have any questions about that?
Any questions to Mrs. Fisk?
Other than I know Commissioner Thorsted, as well as Chris and you, Tina, had a lot to do with it. I looked it over, I thought it looked good. Commissioner Thorsted, it's your portfolio, I guess.
Yeah, I think it's good. The only comment I'll make is, I think going forward now, we want to look at this continually, not wait, what, it's been five years, seven years, however long it is?
Yeah.
Because I think the adjustments are substantiated by our extra costs, you know, involved in labor and everything else, and of course, our recycling costs, which we never have charged anybody, anything for, so I'd make a motion to approve, but again, I just hope going forward that we'll continually look at these on a periodic basis, whether it's annually or annually or whatever.
I'll second that motion. Been moved and seconded. That we accept the sanitation rate, recommended rates, seventeen fifty for residential rate, six dollar basic service fee for per unit for commercial account, and a hundred and sixty dollars for a roll-off rate. Is there any further discussion?
And just one other comment, again, I think we mentioned it last time, is the commercial accounts certainly should look at, you know, the size of the dumpsters they got and the frequency of pickups, because I think they could probably save some money if they make the adjustments there. So there are ways that commercial can adjust, rather than staying where they're at and then probably seeing the rate decrease, so.
Will we be discussing that with the commercial?
Well, what we will do is, in talking with Chris, and we talked about this when we also met with Mike and with Mark, is as people call in, as commercial customers call in, we will sit down with them and go through and say, okay, this is what your rate will be, but if you wanted to do it this way, where we only pull you once a week versus three times a week, we could put a bigger dumpster here, and this could be your savings. So we will sit down and work with them and try to find ways to make it the most cost-effective as possible. It's just, there's so many accounts, there's no way to reach out to all of them, other than as we calculate forward, we might be able to send them out a preliminary notice saying this could be your adjustment effective January one. If you have questions or would like to discuss it, please contact us. If you'd like us to do that, we sure can do that.
How are the bills sent to our commercial customers now? Is it electronic or is it paper?
Some people receive them electronically if they've chosen to, otherwise they're sent by mail.
All right, well, then, that's easy to, both electronically and by paper, to put an insert in and explain it to them. I think one of the interesting things in the discussion and what Chris brought forward is that you can have a different sized dumpster, and the pull rate is the same, whether it's a three yard or a six yard. So, to go to Mike's point, in communicating with them, that's an important thing.
Yeah, I don't know if it is the exact same, but at any rate, if you can reduce the number of pulls, you know, that's
Yeah.
It's just x number of dollars every time we go there to get it, so if you could
In all of Chris's calculations, every pull is scheduled, or time allowed is fifteen minutes, so it doesn't make any difference if it's a bigger size. So, I asked that question. I too would like to commend Chris and Tina for their work on this. Early on, in the onboarding, this was brought to my attention that this had not been adjusted, so I asked for all of the numbers, and Chris did an exceptional job in presenting this to us, and it was a real tell, I think, for all of us. So, I wish Chris was with us this evening. He's traveling back from a doctor's appointment with his family, but he did a great job. So, we have a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the recommended rates, residential rate is seventeen fifty, basic service fee of six dollars per unit on the commercial accounts, and a roll-off rate of a hundred and sixty dollars per pull, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We're going to continue moving down the agenda due to the fact that the public hearing is announced at six PM. Is that correct? Tina, so the next rate, or next item will be the North Dakota Reserve Fund rotation. Mrs. Fisk.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. I had talked with you briefly about this prior, and first of all, I want to say that our current insurance carrier agent has done an amazing job. They're doing a very good job and have done so for an extremely long time. I bring this forward because we had a local agent of West Fargo come forward and say, you know, we'd like to be considered on a rotation if possible. It's not something the city has done before, it's a very common practice of communities, and it's one way to allow everybody in your community to have that opportunity if they're qualified. Now, the rates for the North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund, whether it's company A, B, or C, are going to be exactly the same. So, it's just more the service factor of it, and seeing if we want to allow a West Fargo business that serves here to come in and serve for us. My suggestion would be, I actually have two different options. My suggestion would be that we put it on a minimum of a four to five year rotation, because it takes a year or so to get everything nailed down. By the time they get comfortable with it, you don't want to be pulling it away. So, four years is very common, five years is the second most common, so I would request that you consider either one of those. Also, I would like to solicit in the paper a list of those that are interested in being considered from the area, though we were approached by an individual from a bank in town here, and I would like to consider that individual for the first rotation. I think it's only fair, though, to get a list of names, let you review them, and see if you're comfortable with that. So, I would like to put that out there, bring that forward to you, and then make a recommendation based on after meetings with Mark and Bernie and any other of you that want to, who you would like to have chosen. But I need your permission to put the notice out there and what the term would be.
Mayor, do you want that in a motion now?
Yes.
You're asking for that?
Please.
I can actually avoid them, yes, please.
Okay, I'll make the motion for both options, that we put it to a four or five year rotation, I guess.
Let's be specific.
Five years?
Can you name a specific year?
I like the five year one. And also, option two, to, after this first time, solicit it out. Let the people know. I agree with you a hundred percent. All of our insurers that live in West Fargo should definitely have a chance at it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I can.
Second by Commissioner Jurtevich. Been moved and seconded to have a rotation for the North Dakota Reserve Fund with points that Mrs. Fisk has brought forward with regard to whom she'll choose this rotation, and then a five year rotation thereafter. Is there any further discussion?
Just a quick question.
The certain.
So, this first time, you would go with the company that made the request, is that, and then in five years, you would see how many people are interested?
Well, no, actually, what I would like to do is get the list of people that are actually interested. I know they would be one that were interested, and I would like to consider them, but I think it's only fair to get a list of everybody that's interested and make sure that's really who you choose as a commission. I can make a recommendation, but I'd like for you to be involved in the choosing of the insurance carriers.
Okay, so you would solicit multiple providers this year, if there was people that wanted to apply, and then you'd choose the one out of that?
Yep.
Do we have any criteria on it? What if you get ten people, and you have no experience with nine of them?
There is really, there's really no art to how you can do this. You just kind of have to look into the backgrounds of the companies and see which ones you feel are the more dependable ones, and then that's how it would narrow down the list. After that, it's pretty much drawn it out of a hat almost. If you can't, unless you wanted to say, we're going to move this one first, this one, then this, you know, every five years, I think you pretty much have to resolicit the names of those interested parties, because there could be more or less people interested in doing it. But there's really not an art to it, but I think it's important to research the companies if we don't know of them, and make sure that they're qualified for us.
Okay, are we able, then, say, all things being equal, we know the premiums are the same, are we able to give preferential treatment to a West Fargo business?
Okay. Thank you, Mike, and thank you for having Tina clarify the selection process. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I guess, I just want to make sure I'm clear on it. So, the first time, you're going to let this one do it because they're the ones that request, is that correct or no?
Well, I brought them up because they're the ones who brought this forward, and that would, I want to get the, I'm going to put it out there. I would like to put it out there, and what I've asked you to do is to put it out there for anybody interested with preferential treatment naturally to West Fargo businesses, but then to look at what we have for a short list of those involved, and then maybe there's another one that rises to the top. Right now, that one is my preference, only because they're the ones that came forward, and they were very diligent, and they gave me a lot of information on how, what they would do and how they would work with us. But there could be others as well, but.
But you are going to give us your recommendation, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's, right now, I think that's very important.
Sorry, I'm making it kind of cloudy.
And I guess the last thing, just for clarity here, I would assume within whatever agreement you have, if you're not satisfied with whomever, we're not going to be stuck for five years, so you'll have the option to switch.
There is an annual renewal process that they have to go through, and at that time, if we're not happy or prior to that, we can let them know that we'll be dropping them and going with someone else.
Okay, good. Thank you.
With these insurance companies and insurance companies within the banking, the bank, I would think that, you know, they might be doing it in some other cities, and we can also call on that reference and check and see how that's going on with your contacts and the league and the like. So, any further discussion on the item? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next order of business is the first reading of an ordinance number eleven thirty-two. Mr. Shockley.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the West Fargo City Commission. Tonight before you, it's the first reading of an ordinance to clean up the section regarding vehicles going through street intersections. We're just cleaning up some redundant information, redundant sentences within the section. It was a recommendation that came out of both the police department and the prosecutor's office, or our office, doing prosecutions, just to clean it up. It's really just deleting some language and adding one sentence at the top. Certainly answer any questions, but it's a really simple cleanup.
Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Shockley? This is a non-actionable item as it's a first reading.
Yeah, we need a motion to put it on first reading, there'll be a second reading.
I made a motion. Thank you, Commissioner Olson.
Second.
Commissioner Thorsted. Been moved and seconded to put the redraft of ordinance eleven thirty-two on the first reading.
And just, in the next month or two, I'll be bringing forward a revision, a cleanup revision to the sales tax ordinance. As you may have heard, there was a recent ruling by the United States Supreme Court on internet sales tax, and what happened was the Supreme Court has held that states and localities can tax internet sales. The state tax commissioner has indicated that no further action would be needed by localities to collect, but I'm not necessarily in agreement with that, because our ordinance needs to specifically address those types of sales. It's just a cleanup in the ordinance so that we can capture those sales also. I'll be bringing that forward in a month or two.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. All those in favor of putting ordinance number eleven thirty-two first reading? If I by saying aye?
Do we have a second here on that?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the record, when the ordinance is actually voted on it, Roberts Rules of Order require us to do a roll call vote on all ordinance changes, and I'm going to go by the Roberts Rule, so John, help me remember that as we move forward. I've done a little research, and they do ask for a roll call when you change a city ordinance. Thank you. Next order of business. Item number five is the second reading and the final plat approval of Southdale Second Edition Refplat and Rezoning for R2, Multiple Dwellings to Planned Unit Development. Mr. Solberg.
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant here has not changed the detailed development plans. They have, however, changed the plat. We felt that although the whole site is considered to be one as it's finished, and some questions of Commissioner Thorsted as well, who brought this to our attention, the Phase One and Phase Two portion of the project will not vacate Ninth Avenue, so we've asked them to reduce the plat to be just Lot One, Block One of Southdale Second Edition, and the vacation of Ninth Avenue will not take place at this time. So, that would be probably coming forward soon, maybe even this winter, maybe into spring next year, because they want to get going on that soon after that. But tonight, we've reduced that from the PUD, so they'll have to come back again for that at a later date. Bearing in mind, we've already had public hearings for the whole plan, and there should be no issue with that. I just want to bring that to your attention. The applicant is here, if you have any questions of them. Otherwise, we are proposing a second reading tonight, and I'm available for any questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Any questions of Mr. Solberg? Thank you. Are there any questions for the developers, and those folks took the time to be here this evening? All right. Anything else, Tim? What's the pleasure of the commission?
Make a motion, put it on second reading.
Thank you, Mike. Commissioner Thorsted, is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Been moved and seconded that we put the final plat approval of Southdale Second Edition Refplat and Rezoning to R2, Multiple Dwellings. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Solberg. Item number six, Police Department Security Plan. Chief Yonkey.
Commissioner President, Commissioners, thank you. This has been an issue that has been raised since I arrived here, is with the safety for the employees and the security of our equipment and building on the outside of the police department. We conducted a vulnerability assessment, found several deficiencies where we are at risk. Not going to highlight those in a public forum to let people know where we are vulnerable, but I've made you aware of what those are. So, one of the proposals is to deal with putting a fence around the police department parking lot, and also to tint the windows of all the command staff to make it so that no one can see in on the inside. I'll give you.
Thank you, Chief.
We have met with some fence companies, and this is what we've come up with, thinking it's the best product for the police department, which would be a six foot high aluminum fence that is still see-through, so we're looking for something that is aesthetically pleasing still for that corner, at the same time keeping people out. So, what I would consider is doing a two-phase project. The first phase would be you putting in the fence along with bigger signs to show that it's police department only for Phase One, which we could still get done before this winter, and then the second phase would be putting in gates at each exit in the future to make it fully restrictive, so that it's controlled access, which we want to make sure we do that right. My experience with gates is they break a lot, and we want to make sure we do that perfectly. But the fence that we have selected will be made so that the gates can later be added at that time. How do we pay for this without passing this burden on to the taxpayers? We have a forfeiture account where, when we investigate certain criminal investigations and we seize the cash that comes with it, we are able to forfeit that, where a judge says you can take it and put it in the forfeiture account and use it. We just had a recent thirty thousand dollar seizure in a drug case, so essentially, we're taking drug proceeds that were used for the sale of drugs in our community right here, which will cover the entire cost of this fence, and also to tint the windows in our building. So, essentially, no burden to taxpayers. We expect our officers to keep the community safe. We're using this drug money to keep our officers safe from any potential wrongdoings that are out there. So, it seems to be a win-win for us that we can take our hard work and those illegal proceeds and make this a secure facility as needed. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Commissioners, questions for the chief?
I'm assuming the gates, you need a security, something code or something to get in?
Yes, or remotes. We're thinking the gates that roll across in and out in a quick enough pace where we can get the emergency vehicles out as needed.
Anyone else, questions for the chief?
We need a motion, or anyone? Okay, so that was informative of what we plan on doing moving forward. If there are another questions, one other thing I'd like to highlight, it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We've gone pink to support and raise funds for the Edith Sanford Breast Cancer Foundation to raise money for research. Knowing our leader, our city administrator, has gone through this and is a survivor, we stepped it up this year that we're selling these patches, wearing them all month. I just wanted to make sure you have one of our first.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. Oh, very nice. Yes, sir.
Are we supposed to put this on our clothes now, then, or?
So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
What's the pleasure of, I realize that Chief Yonkey's being, it doesn't have a fiscal note for his security plan, but I would still like to have a motion of support. I'll make, thank you. Commissioner Thorsted?
Thank you.
Commissioner Simmons? Been moved and seconded that we support Chief Yonkey and his security plan and fencing in the police department's parking lot. Any further discussion?
It's just too bad that we have to actually secure a police department parking lot. That's unfortunate, the world we live in.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item number seven is a Suicide Prevention Month proclamation. During the course of the last several months, I've had numerous conversations with Chief Yonkey and Chief Fuller from the Fire Department with regard to the amount of calls that they're dealing with. And in visiting with Chief Yonkey at the present time, in the city of West Fargo, they deal with this on just about a mental health or suicide threat on a daily basis. So, when this was brought forward to me, I thought it was worthy of the commission and the city of West Fargo. So, I'm going to read to you the proclamation of the National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas, September is known around the United States as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and is intended to help promote awareness surrounding each of the suicide prevention resources available to us in our community. The simple goal is to learn how to help those around us and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background, and whereas, according to the CDC, each year more than forty-one thousand people die by suicide, and whereas, suicide is the tenth leading cause of death among adults in the United States, and the second leading cause of death among people aged ten to twenty-four, and whereas, West Fargo, North Dakota, is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, pack leaders, police officers, and parents as partners in supporting our community and simply being available to one another. And whereas, local organizations like Suicide Prevention Services, SPS, and the national organization like the National Alliance on Mental Health and Illness, NAMI, are in the front lines of a battle that many still refuse to discuss in public, as suicide and mental illness remain too taboo a topic to speak on. And whereas, every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. And whereas, I encourage all residents to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors over the next few days, and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, message, handshake, or hug can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Commission President Bernie Dardis, do hereby proclaim the month of September, two thousand and eighteen, as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the city of West Fargo, dated this twenty-seventh day of September, two thousand and eighteen. Thank you. The next order will be item number eight, City Administrator's Report. Or are you ready to do? Not quite yet. We've got to wait for six o'clock for our public hearing. City Administrator's Report. Thirty seconds. It's your pleasure, Tina. We have thirty seconds.
Okay. Andrea and Koff, confirm my throne. I'll start with my City Administrator's Report. Let me get my stuff pulled out here. My first question for all of you as Commissioners is, as the majority of you are new, and we have policy changes, that we have policies that we have in place, and there's sentry code and all these things on our special assessments, and we have a special assessment hearing coming up on the fifteenth at your next meeting. I'm requesting that we hold a special meeting I'm requesting that we hold a special meeting next Monday, October 8th, at 5:30. And at that meeting, it would be only to review the North Coast Century Code, policies and procedures that are in place for the city of West Fargo in regard to our special assessments, how we spread them, how we manage those types of things, and what the rules are that are in place, so that by the time you have your meeting on the 15th, you are up to speed with where we've been and how we got there. So, I would just need a motion to hold a special meeting if you're comfortable with that.
Tina, would that meeting be in here or would it be in the meeting room?
It, my, I guess my thought was to have it in, in one of the meeting rooms, so that it's more of a discussion.
That was my, that was my thought, too. I, I think it's a good idea and I think we should do it, but personally, I just don't want to see anything else on there. I want to concentrate just on this, so the other staff doesn't come in and start throwing on other items. Let's just go in there and...
Yep. My request is to have that be the only item as we had discussed prior as well.
You need a...
I need a motion.
I'm okay. Leave the motion, ma'am. Just Commissioners, is there any issue with any of you with schedule? You have head shakes in the affirmative, Tina, so that's a go.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We'll get that all set up. John will be your main speaker. He'll be providing all the entertainment, so him and Dustin and a few others. So, with that being said, October 9th of this month is the joint meeting between the schools, the city, and the parks that we've been working on. Courtney, Courtney's been helping get this set up. And the plan is it will be Tuesday, October 9th. From 4:00 to 5:30, we'll have a meeting of the three boards and it'll be held in the training rooms and just have a, like a circle and everyone sits down, will talk. And then from 5:30 to 6:30 would be a social where members of the community could come to meet all the different board members and, and discuss whatever topics they want. Since there will be quorums of the three boards, it's an open meeting. It will be open to the public. Agenda items that we've kind of been throwing around just for talking points, you don't have to hit them all, you don't even have to talk about them all, but Barb from the parks and Mark from the schools and I met and we talked about discussing the collaboration we've had between the three boards, places we can improve that collaboration, places where it worked, didn't work, and how to go forward. Maybe discussing our mill levies, what we feel our future needs are going to be, those types of things, but not getting into, you know, a whole lot of detail. Maybe lagoon decommissioning, how does that affect the schools possibly, the parks, those types of things with their timeline? We thought Mike could maybe give a diversion update and have a little bit of discussion on that. And then, special assessments, but with the focus being on how to help the residents understand assessments, what they are, what they do, how they work, that type of thing. And then any current and future plans. Now, that's a big agenda, a big list, and you'll come up with your own. It's more of an open forum. We'd like Bernie to, I'm sorry, Commissioner Dardis, to lead the meeting as it will be held here at City Hall. And if there's other items you want to talk about, you don't even have to use these. These were just some that Barb and Mark and I came up with at the time. And I'll send out an agenda and invitations and things. Courtney will work on that with me. And one of the other items that they had talked about was possibly having Ryan Feltman, the Cultural Liaison Officer, available, maybe not, maybe he doesn't be there during the meeting, but maybe after during the social part, so people could meet our Cultural Liaison Officer, that type of thing. I'm not sure how you feel about that, but that was just something that was thrown out. So, I just wanted to kind of give you a little bit of an update. I know you've all kind of heard a little bit about this and seen it because I was bugging you to get dates. So, that is the, that is the date that was chosen. I know it didn't work for all of you, but it was the best date for the majority of you and the best date for the majority of the other two boards. So, I appreciate those that can come and those that aren't able to. Next couple things, I just want to let you know that applications have closed for the Finance Director and the City Engineer positions. And we will be arranging interviews on Friday for Finance Director and Monday for City Engineer.
Of this, this week's Friday?
This week's Friday and next Monday. Yep. So, we'll be sending out notices for those of you when we, to make sure that it works with your schedules. Those that were going to be involved, I know Commissioner Dardis and Commissioner Simmons had talked about, they're both going to be involved as it affects Mr. Simmons's portfolio and Bernie wanted to be involved because it's an area of interest and it's an effect for the city. So, we'll have him and them involved in the City Engineer position and we'll have another committee for the finance. So, just kind of a heads up. The next thing, and this will be actually something that will affect the budget, is Jenna received the rate changes for next year for Blue Cross and Blue Shield. You know, they're always really good about giving to us when we're done with the budget, which is really nice. They can't help it, we've tried, but just so that you have a good idea, we estimated a 5% increase in the budget this year. And their health insurance, which is the major portion of it, came in at 3%. And the other changes were minimal and, for instance, the dent, the vision, the vision, right? Dental dropped. Dental dropped anywhere between $3 and $7.80 depending on your plan. And vision went up some, but overall, it was such small amounts that there's still less than a 5% increase. It's probably between 3 and 4 at best. So, the budget amount of 5% will leave us with some wiggle room, so that will be good. And so, I want you to be aware of that. And that is all I have for my...
Mrs. Fisk, would you, would you restate what meeting is on Monday, other than, or special events meeting, or, excuse me, our commission meeting, but you also said one of the...
I'm sorry. There will be, we set up a special meeting to discuss special assessments Monday, the 8th, but then Tuesday, the 9th, will be the joint board meeting. And I will be, Courtney and I will be sending out information on that coming forward. And that one will also be held here at City Hall, but we'll start at 4.
Mr. Commissioner Simmons is going to, we have a West Fargo Events Meeting, which takes school board members and both of us...
And park board members.
And park board members. At 5:00 to 6:00 on Tuesday night.
On Tuesday night. Well, potentially, I could work with Mackenzie if that's all right with you to...
I was going to say, I'll schedule that meeting.
Okay, thank you.
But you also had a meeting for either the engineer or Finance Director. Was that next week?
The engineering interviews are in the morning on Monday.
Not available.
You're not available? Okay, all right. So, we can make an adjustment then. We'll check your schedule and, and we'll make that adjustment. They're not set up yet. That was just a tentative time.
I'm returning. I'll be home that evening.
Okay, so possibly Tuesday?
Yes, ma'am.
Possibly, okay. All right, thank you. We'll, we'll check into that.
Thank you.
Yep. And I'll send that information all typed up. When I stand up here and talk, I don't expect you to be able to get it all written down, so thank you.
Thank you.
Tina, Courtney, can we just ask to have an invite set out to, to the all Commissioners? An invite, just so much easier than we just say invite and when we do stuff like this, it'd be a lot easier to just invite rather than us try to sit here and put it in. It's easier to just say, yes, we take it, and then it goes in. So easy.
Yep, yep. We'll send out an actual invite that can drop in your Outlook calendar. I hope we, Mike, yours doesn't hook up to your Outlook calendar, so we'll just send an email to you. One last thing, I almost forgot. Tomorrow morning, there's going to be an emergency radio update regarding the sales tax ballot question, held at the Commission Room at the Cass County Courthouse at 9:30. I know that Chief Yonkey will be there, as well as Chief Todd and Chief Dirksen, and Paul Laney, the Sheriff of Cass County, and a couple other people, and I plan to attend.
I plan on attending also.
And that is all I have. If you want to move into the budget.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisk. Going back to the regular agenda, item number one, public hearing and final budget approval. Fisk?
Other than some grammatical changes and just a few adjustments, the financial numbers themselves from the preliminary budget, I'm not having a lot of changes. There's a couple of them to note if, on page 46 for Municipal Court, the judge salary of, the judge's salary is currently $48,000 and I would request that it stays at $48,000 the coming year. I've met with Commissioner Simmons and I believe Commissioner Simmons and Commissioner Dardis have spoke as well about keeping that at the same rate. That one has risen significantly over the last few years and so we felt that it was fair to leave it as is. If you have any questions on any of these, you can sure ask me. The only other correction I have is on page 28, the Human Resources. I had taken out the travel and education of $5,000 for the staff of the Human Resources Department, and that was because I looked at continuing education, which had $10,000 in it, and I thought, that's a lot of money. Well, the $10,000 is for overall staff education, not human resources education. That's for different educations and trainings for our staff as a whole. And so, I would request that we have both of those and then that would be an increase of $5,000, which leaves us $4,000 adjusted. That would have to be brought down from somewhere. And so, my last recommendation to you would be to reduce the accountant position salary that was put into the Finance Department by that difference, or expenditures stay the same. And then also, my suggestion is to put that position on hold. I believe we need to get a Finance Director in here, get that person up and trained and see what the needs are, and then reassess the needs of, of all the different staff to make sure that we're making the correct decision on what to do with those funds. And if we don't use them, then we can just take them off of costs for next year. Other than that, nothing really has changed. Our increases, our levies, of course, are going to be the, are going to be the same. Do you have questions for me on where we're at and different departments or where we're going?
Other than to say, I think you did a great job, Tina. So, congratulations on your staff. I think you did a great job on the budget this year.
I appreciate all of you taking your time. I appreciate you all of you taking your time to walk through with me. And please, as we go forward, any questions, concerns, comments, very open to listen, and I appreciate it. Mike is always really good to give, to give us bullet points of what it is that is questionable or needs to be looked at, so don't ever hesitate.
It's your pleasure, Commissioners.
Make a motion to approve the, oh, I'm sorry, public hearing?
Yes, sir. In a, in a moment, I'll close the regular part and go to the public hearing. Are there any questions? All right, we'll close the regular agenda meeting and we'll go to the public hearing. Sir, please step up and state your name and address.
My name is Peter Hepper. Address is 1610 Maple Place, West Fargo.
Thank you.
I received notice of this meeting along with taxes. I think everybody got one. This is not a bill. Start out, one of the things I noted on here, it says property tax by district. On the right is a summary. Increase, 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 increase. Net taxes are up 8.15%. I believe inflation is sub 3%. I didn't bring the exact figure. My point is, is if inflation is sub 3% and, and my taxes are increasing by 8%, what happens when inflation goes up? If inflation goes to 5 or 6, does that mean my property taxes are going to go up by 18%? Rhetorical question. I just want to offer the feedback at this point. So, the issue is taxes. The money has to come from somewhere. There's two ways. If you guys run a business, a household or whatever, you have expenditures and you have income and somehow they have to meet. One point is, before I forget, the police department just mentioned that they're doing the fence security, probably required or whatever. They're using seized assets for that, 30,000. It's not costing the taxpayers. Actually, if that money wasn't used for the fencing, it would go into the general budget, wasn't it? So, regardless... Okay, okay. But, counterpoint, I'm guessing he has a flak jacket or bulletproof vest or whatever they call them underneath. If they didn't have seized assets to pay for that, where would that money come from? The West Fargo General Fund. So, you can say potatoes or patatas, the money is the money for the taxpayers. Not saying it's not a good cause for all of them, I'm just saying it's not free to the taxpayers. That money would do something else. They would use it for the bulletproof vests or the cars and then it wouldn't come out of our general fund, anyway. And I was trying to make this concise, keep going. I just wanted to point out that somewhat misnomer, fallacy, whatever. I did ask, so as I say, we have the expenditures and the income and they have to balance. I went to a park board meeting last summer and I asked them to bring this up to you. My big issue is property tax exemptions. I mentioned it there because I figured they would have a better voice with you than an individual taxpayer. The reason I went to that, because that meeting is because the property, the park board taxes went up significantly. So, I go to the meeting and they go, well, we bought a lot of land and we forgot to allocate for specials. And how do you fix that? You raise taxes. Now, you can't do it at home. You give an extra billion and expect you go to your boss and say, I need more money. It doesn't work like that. I don't think the government should work any differently. I also went to the school board. I got on TV, I guess, and mentioned the same thing, is that they should come and talk to you because the exemptions that you give affects their budget. Some hard numbers on this is West Fargo gives out exemptions of $360 million in property value and $5 million a year is left on the table. You look puzzled. I got these numbers off the West Fargo website. I sent an email to somebody, I can't remember. They came back. That's readily available data in, on the website, and I'm trying to think. They have to do an annual thing on it. So, did I get that cheap back there? This is a printout from the West Fargo website, one of the documents. Over here, it shows the property value, 359,480,000. Property taxes, tax dollars, $4,985,963. Now, the reason I brought it up to the school board is my school board is approximately half of that. So, the school board is out $2.5 million a year, of money left on the table by properties that are not getting taxed. I believe in paying my fair share, which is fair, but if you're giving these guys exemptions and you're giving these guys $5 million a year, it's got to come from somewhere. And as I pointed out with my 8.5%, it's coming from me and all the existing taxpayers. And you can argue that exemptions are given for a reason. New houses are giving, I think it's like 25%, round numbers, 24.4. If you look at this pie chart on here, new residential construction is giving 25% of these exemptions. Now, this is grandfathered in from years. I've been in the city for about 30 years. When it first started out, they wanted West Fargo to grow. The issue with West Fargo now is it's growing too fast. If you run a business or took business classes, one of the things that's fatal to businesses is if they grow too fast. So, back then, we needed it, but they kept doing it because Fargo was doing it. And Fargo did it because West Fargo was doing it, and neither is a good reason. I jumped off the bridge because they jumped off the bridge and they jumped off the bridge. It makes no sense. So, the growth is a reason for that, is causing issues in the city of West Fargo and especially for the school district, right? They're asking for another 107 million, which wasn't approved, so they need more money and all these exempted properties aren't paying for it, so we're paying for it. So, my point is if you limit or stop doing property tax exemptions, it could slow down the growth, which would help the school districts because it's causing a lot of headaches, and it would get more income. It would be self-balancing as opposed to making the rest of us pay for it. One other thing that I'd point out is, I think it fell on a deaf ear at the park board or whatever, because I don't think any of you guys heard from the park board members about property tax exemptions. And it probably fell on a deaf ear at the school board meeting because they can get their money without doing whatever. What I noticed... What I noticed is, oh, just this last summer, Cargill was approved for a forty to forty-five million dollar property tax exemption, just like, just like giving out candy, it seems like. They actually have a special department that does exemptions. Call us here, we'll help you with an exemption, so.
With all due respect, Cargill hasn't gotten a dime. They're not building the project, they haven't been approved for the project as of yet. That's, if they should be approved for the project, yes, then they will have an exemption, but they have not approved, so that's not taking one dime out of the.
Yes. Okay, my, my source, and I brought my sources, in forum, West Fargo. "West Fargo, City Commissions have unanimously approved a property tax exemption for Cargill Inc. that would allow the major agricultural company to save money on taxes for ten years on a potential expansion of its plant, the two fifty-seventh Avenue Northeast."
They continue to pay taxes on the property that they have there now.
Right.
The exemption is only on the addition.
On the improvements. I understand that.
Yes, sir.
It's an exemption on, on the forty-five to fifty-five million dollar improvement. Without the exemption, they would be paying taxes on it. I understand they haven't built it.
Peter, I, we've given you fifteen minutes. The item of, that we're talking about is approval of the budget. Now, we understand that you're here talking about your taxes and are talking about that, but if you have any more discussion, please keep it directed to the, the approval of the final budget for the City of West Fargo, not your taxes with the park board and the, and the, and the school board.
I received notice on my tax statement, so I thought this is where I talked about that. And the last statement I'd make is the fact that I think I'm not, I'm not the only one that is tired of business as usual with the budget, and you said the budget, but the budget is a function of my taxes, that's where you get the money for. It is relevant. Is, you were elected, I believe, because taxpayers are tired of business as usual. The incumbent commissioner was not elected, so what I do is if I go, do I like how things are going? No, next.
Point's very well taken. Thank you, Miss. Tina?
I just want to remind you, I just want to remind you as Commissioners that in order to keep our mill levy actually up to a seventy-three point oh four, and this year it's seventy-three mils, or our mill levy did not go up. In order to do that, we use, as many funds as we can find, but I don't have time, which we're going to have to deal with later. So my, my, what I think that means here is that your property value went up, if your city tax went up, we did not increase the mill levy, which would be the only thing that would affect, so the only thing that would affect your, your property tax from the city is the valuation.
Okay. So I understand how the budget works. You have property values here, and you take the mill levy and you multiply the two numbers. My property value has gone up thirty-three percent in the last three years, okay? So, and, and I believe it's required by law to assess the value at a given percent of the property, I understand, and it's fair, so everybody pays their fair share. But if the property values of the city, the total property values that the city has to assess goes up, the mill levy should go down unless the budget is increasing faster than inflation, right? So I do understand that concept, so if my property value went up, the mill levy should go down, and if the exempted properties weren't exempted, my property taxes.
On my comment that we're growing the community, with the additional houses, additional streets, water, sewer lines, additional police for fire department, all of those things, that we're doing actually a very excellent job of keeping the street level low with the growth we have because of the fact that we are still down twenty-one mils from where we used to be, even though we've been growing and potentially U.S. tax base is higher, but we're still being able to keep within that tax base and not raise people, you know, if we did not grow, people's taxes would be going up.
And you guys are business, this goes back to business, I would beg exception to that. If you're not growing, you don't need more police and you don't need more money. So if we were staying the same, our taxes would be the same because we'd have the same police, the same fire, et cetera. The reason we need more of those is because we're growing. The reason we don't have the money for that is because they're exempted. So we're growing, we're adding more police for those people.
So, Peter, that's not true. I, I kind of had enough, quite honestly, because I'm a pro, big time pro against those exemptions. You mentioned Cargill, okay? If we don't do something like that for a company like Cargill, they're leaving, they pretty much die. That's two hundred jobs that are gone if we don't, and as far as the exemptions go, you know, you do a five million exemption downtown, four or five years, however long that takes, all of a sudden, that's, you know, that's thirty-five, forty million. We get that back, you make it sound as if the exemptions we give are gone, as that value to value comes back into our tax base, we get those back again. So we don't completely lose what you're saying here, and I take exception to that.
We lose these exemptions, according to the paper, for ten years on forty-five, that money is gone. Now, ten years down the road, we'll start getting the money on that, but the money on the ten years on the fifty million is gone. Now.
So what happens if they're not here?
What's that?
What if they're not here?
Okay, good, good point. And that's always the argument, is they will leave. How much is that plant worth? Hundreds of millions, right? So they're going to say, if you don't give us forty-five, it's the standard corporate thing, of course you're going to ask for the exemptions. They're going to close down a plant worth hundreds of millions with great employees because they're not going to, they're always going to ask for it. It's my understanding, it's, it's a standard corporate thing, and they always go, well, if you don't give us, we're going to go to Fargo or whatever. The reason a lot of businesses, Costco, for example, comes to Fargo isn't for the property taxes, it's because they can sell a lot and make a lot of money. If they can get the property tax, they can go to corporate and look, by the way, I saved us a million dollars a year in property tax because I asked for it, and of course they gave it to us. Do you think Costco wouldn't build here without the property tax exemption? Of course they would. Why? Because they're going to sell a lot of stuff and make a lot of money. They're going to ask, it's, it's, does that make sense?
Thank you, Peter. We need to move on. I'm closing the public hearing and going back to the regular agenda item of final approval of the two thousand nineteen budget. Is there a motion to approve the budget as proposed?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Olson. Been moved in second to approve the budget as presented by Mrs. Fisk. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Correspondents? Tina? Nothing? Commissioners, anything for the good of the order from yourselves?
Adjourned.
Thank you, Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in second to adjourn. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your time this evening.